We'll start the Cedar Springs Plan Commission meeting of Tuesday, October first, twenty twenty four at seven o'clock. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
Invisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call then, Mr. Berzinski.
Here.
Mr. Hoag.
Here.
Mr. Merlington. Now, see Mr. Merlington.
Heard anything?
Ms. Napprowski. Uh, I don't know about Mr. Nixon. Um, Mrs. Powell.
Here.
Your colleague is here. Uh, we also, of course, have Ms. Falcon, the city manager, Mr. Moore, the, the, um, city planner. And Ms. Johnson, the city clerk in attendance tonight. The first thing we need to do then is to look at the meeting minutes. Ooh, I got loud. Started picking me up here. Uh, look at the meeting minutes for, um, August thirteenth, twenty twenty four, and see if we can approve those, or if there's anything that needs to be changed.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from our previous meeting.
Support.
Do. Is there anything anyone would like us to look at before we move forward with that? Hearing nothing, all in favor of approving the August thirteenth, twenty twenty four minutes, be signify with aye.
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 All opposed? Minutes? And then next, we have to look at our agenda for this evening. Obviously, that's page one of your packet. And before we could continue.
Prove this month's agenda.
Second that.
So any either why I shouldn't, or why we shouldn't approve tonight's agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We have an agenda. Okay, uh, the public comments period. Actually, there's no one in attendance here. Is there anyone on Zoom? Okay, so I'm going to consider that the opportunity for public comments and move on. Uh, item seven, conflicts of interest and ex parte communication. Does anyone on the planning commission have any of the above to report before we move on? Hearing none. Item eight, there are no scheduled public hearings. Item nine, there are no site plan reviews. Which gets us all the way to item ten, so not bad for three minutes. Other business. Uh, item A and other business is the master plan update, review of survey results.
All right, so, uh, I, we have some results to report to you. These are just got entered in and tabulated within the last week, which is why they weren't in your packets. But I'd like to, uh, continue the review and conversation on the master plan with you this evening, just by reviewing the results. So, um, on the screen here, Rebecca has the, the results up, and we'll just kind of go through them briefly one at a time. And of course, if there are questions or discussion points, feel free to just kind of jump in.
Says, and I didn't.
Zoom in a little bit, yeah, there we go. And I can kind of go through each of these, um, broad takeaways. So the first series of questions are just sort of background information. So this one, we just kind of, we ask what in what type of residence people live. And the overwhelming majority of respondents, eighty-five percent said a single family home. Uh, one percent were in duplexes, four percent manufactured, five point six percent multifamily. So we got about a hundred and eighty of these back in the mail. So it wasn't quite as good as, good as I was hoping for, but still a hundred and eighty surveys returned, I think, was, um, you know, pretty decent rate of return and, and ends up being, I want to say, in the percent range. We sent out more than a thousand of these. Maybe so, um. It's, it was, it was a good response, as per usual, we get most of these back pretty quickly. Um, there's a couple of things in the results here that I want to kind of highlight that I, that I liked in terms of the responses, and I think will help us moving forward. Um, people owned or rent their homes, so the, um, majority of respondents owned them, ninety percent of them. Um, we sent this out not to property owners, but to all, uh, a sample of, you know, it was all registered voters. Um, because we wanted to make sure that we included some of the city's renters and it wasn't just going to landlords and, and owner occupied houses. So we did get, again, it's, it's mostly owned, which is what I expected. Um, but we did get about ten percent of respondents were renters. Um, on the next one, we asked how long people lived in Cedar Springs. We got a good, pretty good breakdown here between people who've lived here for, for fewer than three years, which was eighteen percent, three to nine years was a quarter, and then twenty-five years was twenty-two percent, and then longer than twenty-five years was thirty-five percent. So, um, a lot of times when, when we do these male surveys, we get a lot of responses from people who are seniors and who have lived in the community for a very long period of time. So, um, with a lot of these background questions, and we'll see some more coming up. I'd like to see kind of a, a pretty good cross section of, of, uh, responses here in terms of how long they've been here. And the next one is, is age, so this one actually surprised me a bit because with male surveys, seventy, sixty-five to seventy-four and seventy-five and older usually skews way out of proportion with the rest of the respondents. It's like three quarters of our, of our results come from people who are over sixty-five. This one, except for the nineteen to twenty-four demographic, which I think was like one person. Um, everyone else, you know, all the other age brackets that we have listed out here gave us a pretty good number of responses, and it was fairly even, which I was encouraged to see. So twenty-five to thirty-four was fourteen percent, thirty-five to forty-four was sixteen percent, forty-five to fifty-four was about fourteen percent, and so on. So there's a little bit of skewing towards the older demographic, which i- i- isn't surprising, but like I said, usually it's way more dramatic than that. So again, I, I was happy to see kind of a broad cross section of the community. So we know that the results that we're looking at aren't just one particular, uh, age group that's focused on a certain set of issues. We have a broad, you know, range of feedback from everybody in the city. Uh, the next one, we asked where they primarily worked, so more than, uh, not more than half, more than a third said they retired. Uh, more than a quarter said they worked in the Grand Rapids area, and almost twenty percent said, said that they worked from home. Um, those were kind of the top three, uh, categories there, which was, you know, the large majority of, of respondents. About seven percent worked in Cedar Springs, four percent Rockford, two per, two percent elsewhere in Kent County. Uh, I mean, a few other places. So I think probably not surprising to anybody in, in the room. A lot of people were retired, which is reflected by the number of people who responded that were over the age of sixty-five, right? And then, um, not surprising to anybody, I don't think, is that the next largest peop-, you know, group of people who are employed, you know, work in the Grand Rapids area, not within the city of Cedar Springs. Number six asks how many persons are in your household? Um, or how many persons are in your, in your household? So the average was two, two adults and one point eight kids. So again, about tracks with what we see in like the, the census and information and things like that. Um, uh, the next one asks about age for your age and the age of other adults in the household. So again, this is similar to the question previously, a nice, um, you know, distribution of of responses. Here again, we're looking for, um, how, how big the households are. So we see under the eighteen to twenty-five, um, there are a number of of families with, um, with, you know, other adult two and other adult three is in that same age bracket. So there's some, you know, roommate situations or parents living with two children who are o- over the age of eighteen or one or two kids who are over the age of eighteen. Um, but we have a lot of households, I think, that only have two people in them in the city, which, um, again, not, not super surprising, given the number of retirees who did, uh, answer the survey. Um, but I think when we're, when we're thinking about how um, and, and, and services and, and stuff like that, you know, it, it's and if we're thinking about how many people live in, in the household, there, there might not be a larger demand for like, you know, five bedroom homes, right? It might be one bedroom or two bedroom homes, might be something that we need to give more consideration to. To something that's, that's bigger, because I think we have a lot of one or two person households in the city. Uh, number eight asks where people are most likely to go for goods or services. So for, uh, so the, the dark blue on top is grocery slash households goods. The kind of purply color is entertainment. And then the green on the bottom is, is recreation. So, um, this is also what I expected to see. So you have a Myron and Aldi now, so your groceries are going to be local. Um, entertainment, uh, we see that ninety percent mark Grand Rapids for where they go for entertainment. And for recreation, they had elsewhere in, in, in Kent County. So that could be, um, you know, county parks or parks in, in other communities or something like that could be, uh, you know, variety of things. There's a lot of, you know, good recreational opportunities, trails, et cetera. So people might just say, yeah, we, we ride the trail, but it's not a Cedar Springs thing. It's, we go someplace else, or we ride down to Rockford or something. So, um, kind of interesting match there, but again, not hugely surprising that, that groceries are, are, are local entertainment in GR, which is kind of what we expected to see. This was one of those check all that apply types of answers, which is why all the, it doesn't add up neatly to a hundred percent in any of those categories. Because people could say, well, I go to Grand Rapids for this, and I also go to, you know, Greenville for the same thing. Like, uh, this one here that has a lot of people getting, you know, groceries and household goods in Greenville. I'm assuming that's probably the Walmart effect. Uh, they have Walmart there, and that's the closest one other than Alpine maybe. So it's probably a bit closer for people here. Um, and then the next one, these are just some write-in comments. So whenever there's just a random block of text, we have a, you know, if there's something not listed here, we ask them to fill in something. So, um, there's just, again, kind of a variety of answers here. I think a lot of these Cadillac, other areas, Lake Shore, Newago, Muskegon are probably recreation based questions. Uh, number nine, from the following list, please select the most important reason you've chosen to live in Cedar Springs. Again, this is a check all that applies, so it's not going to add up to a hundred percent. Uh, but just more than half said small town lifestyle. Um, proximity to Grand Rapids was the next largest, um, factor. Followed by safe area, or they grew up here, or a lower cost of living, schools, parks and trails, et cetera. So close to GR, basically a small town close to GR would check the boxes for a lot of people. Um, and again, I think when we, if you were to do this, ask the same question in Rockford or Sparta or maybe even Greenville or building or a lot of places, I think a lot of them would probably select something similar. Um, again, there's a lot of writing comments here. Some people are just born here, some people work here, uh, have Sparta, I have, have Sparta, have family nearby, you know, close to work, et cetera. Number ten asks, in the next five years, do you expect to move out of Cedar Springs? Okay. Um, about a third almost were unsure, and fifteen percent said yes. So there is some kind of turnover in, or some potential, I guess, for, for turnover in, uh, who, who lives here again, which isn't terribly surprising, especially since you do have a fair number of, you know, rental properties in, in the city. They tend to be a little, a little bit more transient and might not be as tied down to one specific area. Um, about sixty percent of your residents thought the city was growing, uh, about right, as far as the pace of growth. About seventy percent said it's growing too quickly, and about the same number said it's growing too slowly, and about ten percent didn't offer an opinion. Um, in terms of rating the city's efforts to guide growth and development, a plurality, forty percent said fair. Uh, a little more, al- almost a quarter said good. Um, so kind of all, 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 all over the map here, um, there's a lot of people that just didn't have any opinion at all, and probably don't spend a lot of time thinking about it. Um, which, you know, obviously that large number of people without an opinion could, you know, change the analysis quite a bit. So, uh, we don't get a lot of guidance with this, other than there's some people that are thinking like, yeah, it's, it's okay. You know, it's not, we're not experiencing explosive growth here with houses going up everywhere. Uh, but at the same time, it also is in a community that, that's stagnating, I guess. Um, so this was one that we added in, how do you perceive the level of regulation under the current Cedar Springs zoning ordinance? Um, a plurality said, I don't know, so about forty percent. So I, I think that can be perceived as sort of an opportunity for the city to work on educating its residents in terms of what the rules are, or maybe how to find them. And that can be something that we talk about during the master plan processes, how we can do a better job of educating people what they can and can't do, what the regulations are. Uh, the next largest group, just more than a quarter felt that, uh, they were overregulated by zoning. About twenty percent said properly regulated, and twelve percent said underregulated. Um, so there were some people that, you know, indicated underregulated, and another pretty good chunk said, what we do now is appropriate, that adds up to about a third of the city. There are a lot of public comments in here that we'll talk about in, in a little bit, that sort of speak to, um, or could be perceived to speak to zoning regulations, because there's a lot of comments in here about like, you know, the condition of properties and kind of enforcement and cleaning things up and stuff like that, which we'll talk about in a bit. Um, number fourteen, please rate your level of concern regarding the following issues. So these are, were sorted, uh, from most concerned to least concerned. So most concerned was equality of groundwater, uh, followed by quality of streets, traffic congestion, enforcement of zoning and property maintenance, traffic speed, quality of public utilities, so on and so forth, all the way down to lack of trails, bike lanes and wide shoulders. Uh, so people are not concerned about that. Um, obviously you guys have a trail that runs right through the heart of your community, which probably helps, you know, decrease that, that, that type of a concern. I mean, obviously you have very good access to grocery and household goods with multiple grocers in the, in the city. Um, there were a number of comments in here about, uh, water and sewer rates, um, which you'll kind of see as we scroll through the, the, the public comments here. Um, but there wasn't anything is, is, is we went through here that was like an overwhelming kind of concern. Uh, number fifteen, which I think lines up well with the previous question. So I, number fourteen, the, the number one concern was quality of groundwater. And so number fifteen, in terms of potential city improvements, how important are the following? Protecting our groundwater was what looks like by a significant margin, the most important priority that people had, which surprised me a little bit because most people are on public water and sewer services here. Obviously, that's sourced from the, from groundwater, I think. So, um, and I think we've seen this in a bunch of different communities now, and especially in northern Kent County with there's this, you know, very apparent public consciousness over PFOS contamination that Rockford is experiencing. And a lot of other communities have, I think that's something that people recognize that that's, you know, a critical resource, and that protecting is going to be very important. Um, additional, uh, comments include here improving public roads, protecting private property rights, improving the downtown, improving traffic flow, preserving small town character. So a lot of what's identified in the previous question as concerns are reflected in the next question as, you know, priorities moving forward. So, um, there was a lot of congruency between those two questions, um, which I thought was kind of interesting. Uh, the next question asked about what types of housing people would like to see in the city. Uh, more than half said they would like to see additional single family homes, um, which doesn't surprise me because that's kind of what everybody is used to. Uh, but there is, you know, some support for, uh, uh, two family units. Um, is attached, single family, tiny homes. Um, sixteen percent didn't offer an opinion, twelve percent said multifamily, oh, ten, eleven percent said accessory dwellings. Uh, the same amount said they don't want any nu- 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 new housing in the city. Um, and it kind of goes down from there. So this is a pretty, um, typical kind of spread. I think a lot of people want to see what they're used to and what the city already has, which is a lot of single family. Um, but I think there is some opportunity here to, for additional, um, a, additional housing types, whether it's two unit buildings or attached single family, like row houses or something. I think there's some, some potential to talk about that in the plan. Um, next question asks what kind of businesses you would like to see in the city? And the overwhelming favorite there was additional sit-down restaurants. Um, by a large margin, uh, that was the only one that got more than half. The other options include, or the other selections include general retail at forty-two percent was the next one. Uh, payment, small retail, recreational or sports related business. Those are all around a third or higher. And then kind of the next step down, there's healthcare, industry, personal services, hotels, grocery stores, um, et cetera. Nobody wants any more fast food, apparently. I think you guys are all set there, according to your residents. It was only a few people indicated a desire for that. So again, in a lot of communities, we see a desire for more sit-down restaurants as being a very high and popular, you know, type of business that, that, that people want. Um, and there's a lot of suggestions on the next page about what, what, what people like, uh, or, or want to see here. Um, and rate, he asked, how satisfied are you with the following aspects of Cedar Springs? So this one, I was also sorted from most satisfied to least satisfied. So, um, people were most satisfied with the library. Uh, uh, they were, uh, followed by being satisfied with, with the city as a place to live and as the place to raise a family. Uh, fire protection qual- quality of life. So I think these, to me, sort of suggest that there is a lot that people are sort of comfortable here. Um, it's, 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 they feel safe, I think. Obviously, if everyone feels like this is a great place to raise a family, um, I think that, that, that speaks to that a little bit. Um, and then so one of the comments I made earlier was about, um, there's some written comments about enforcement and property maintenance and, and stuff like that. So I noticed with this one, the things that people appear to be least satisfied with, the very bottom one was zoning and code, code enforcement. So, um, again, this is, it, it, you know, as we think about the master plan, it, it makes us wonder if we need to need to look at kind of how it handles zoning enforcement. If there's, you know, messy properties that need to be more aggressively enforced, or kind of what's, what's going to happen with that, and how that wants to be, how that's going to be handled moving forward. So I thought that's an interesting observation that we can talk about.
Curious, um, there's I was, I was the question worded, because you could say someone had a problem with zoning and code enforcement from so I wanted to make sure I understood how it was, that, that, that were there.
That's why it scored the least.
So, so with this one, it was asked on the survey exactly as you see it on the screen. So it was, how satisfied are you with the following aspects? And then zoning and code enforcement was just listed as one of the options. So you're right, somebody who felt like they were getting picked on by the zoning enforcement officer could have been dissatisfied. Or somebody who doesn't think the zoning officer was doing enough could have also been dissatisfied. Um, I think that's, that's definitely possible. And so on the scale here, the, the dark blue, or the blue shades on the left is, is very satisfied, dissatisfied, to neutral, to dissatisfied, to very dissatisfied. So there's, here, there, there's also a fairly large range of people who mark that as neutral. Like forty-five, almost half of your respondents just were kind of, didn't give a response. And because with some of the other questions, we also saw that they had kind of went like, you know, they didn't seem to be sure about, about zoning or how it worked, or maybe they haven't really had to interact with that at all. Um, there is, I think, I don't know, like, adjoratively, but I think like there's some, there's a level of ignorance there that people just simply aren't aware of what goes on, or how it's done, or how it's handled, or anything like that. Um, but yeah, that's a
question about the regulated, underregulated, overregulated, right? Maybe.
Yeah. But people said, I don't know. And so this, because there are so many neutrals in the middle there, I think that could be a similar situation, for sure, that there are a lot of people that just aren't sure.
And that one directly about what they felt about that zoning, that might give us an indicator of they think we're under or over?
Yeah, so there are, uh, the sixteen comments underneath are directly related to this question. Um, and I'll, I'll send this out to you guys. So this is, all this data is pretty raw coming out of the survey. Um, but there's multiple pages of written comments at, at the end of this thing that, that people filled in. Um, and there are, uh, there are some, some comments in there too, that also speak to enforcement. We can go, go through those here in a minute as well. Um, related to housing, please rate your level of concern regarding the following issues. So this was kind of an interesting one in that, um, you know, there's a, there's a pretty significant level of concern on all of these, so lack of diverse housing types. Um, which was the, you know, sort of probably one that the least number of people were concerned about. Um, you know, compared to cost of new housing, which seventy-five percent of people were, were either very concerned or somewhat concerned about the cost of new housing. Um, and we've in recent years kind of seen that basically everywhere that we've gone, and the conversation around that has, has really changed. And people, there's like, again, like with the groundwater stuff, there's a, a fairly, you know, established public consciousness, consciousness now about the cost of housing and how expensive it is. Um, tied to that, increasing rent prices. Also, again, we have forty percent of the respondents were very concerned about that. And then another twenty-five or so were at least somewhat concerned about it. So just cost re- cost related factors are clearly, um, you know, weighing on people. And then the one above that quality of housing available, again, that's almost seventy percent of the respondents were either very or somewhat concerned about the quality of housing that's available. Um, uh, just a couple more here. So this one, we asked, we just wrote a series of sentences and asked people to rate whether they agree or disagree with the following statements. Um, so one, if more sidewalks and trails were provided, I would use them regularly. Uh, here we had about a little more than sixty percent either strongly agreed or agreed. Uh, the next one, Cedar Springs should encourage additional industrial development to provide higher paying jobs. That one is almost, uh, seventy percent either strongly agree or agree. Um, strong zoning enforcement is needed to get some messy properties cleaned up. That was about two thirds of respondents either strongly agreed or agreed with that. Um, Cedar Springs need to attract more, needs to attract more commercial businesses. That was, I, again, more than sixty percent either strongly agree or agree. Um, I would support short-term rentals being offered in the city was about forty-five percent either strongly agreed or agreed. And then about thirty-five percent either said they disagree or strongly disagree, and about twenty percent didn't. So that one, you know, that's something that we've been talking about, you know, your planning mission level. And we were hoping this would give us some clarity, and it doesn't really give us a bunch. Um, there seems to be some support for it, but it doesn't seem to be overwhelming, and it seems to be, um, something that seems, you know, kind of middle of the road in terms of public perception, there's not a strong feeling either way on that one, it doesn't look like. Um, and the last one, I would be willing to serve on a board or commission to, to support my community. We only got about a quarter of people strongly agreeing or agreeing with that. Um, but, you know, I would highlight that out of a hundred and eighty responses, that gives you what? You know, thirty or, I have more than forty people potentially to choose from who could be interested. So, um, and there, there are people out there who would be interested and willing to serve. Um, and again, there's, this one also had the, the largest number of people that said they don't know, you know. Almost forty percent answered that one as saying, I don't know. And, um, I would guess that in those instances, people just might not know what they would be doing. You know, in the past, when we, I talked to people about joining a planning commission or a ZBA, they go, what's that? What do you do? It is, they just, again, they just don't know. So, um, there, there could be some things the city can do that we can talk about to, again, to sort of make people more aware, or at least try to get people to be more aware about some of the services that the city offers that are not invisible as the obvious ones like streets and water and sewer and snowplowing and stuff like that. Um, and then the rest of the uh, comments, I believe, were just the written comments. Starting here on page, I'm on page nineteen. Um, if you keep going down, it's on page nineteen, I think you're on page, wait, I'm sorry, I'm on page thirty, go on to page thirty-one or thirty-two. So these are all comments that are on the agree, disagree. Uh, that, that, that final question, but then we have like seven pages of just handwritten comments if you keep scrolling. Um. So there's a lot of, I shouldn't say a lot, there are, are several comments in here. Related to. Enforcement or, you know, cleaning, cleaning stuff up. Um, but there's a lot of really good comments in here. Um. Everything from traffic to, so if you keep. Going, there should be several more pages. Yeah. So this is the last question that just. So the very last question, there was just a big old box on the survey that said, write whatever you want here, basically. And so people did just that and we have, um. With. Seventy people took us up on that offer, which is, you know, almost half of your total responses. Offered something. So we didn't need to go through every comment here, but there's all kinds of ideas and comments from some being. You know, constructive and helpful and valuable and others not, not so much. Um. We did, I think at the end, we sort of classified. That we, that we could. So there were about twenty one comments about street repair, lighting, intersections, no removal, stuff like that. There were about twenty comments that, um, to, related to taxes and another fourteen about. Water, about water quality or water bills. Um, there is thirteen comments about. Zoning. Um, or property. Uh, just kind of a range of, you know, a bunch of other things. We, as we tried to kind of lump these together as best we could into some kind of category. That's sort of what we came up with. So it's a very unfiltered comment. So, you know, this obviously does not represent our opinions at all. That's just what people wrote. We just put them in the report for you all to digest. So we'll send this out to you. Takes more time over the next month to kind of think about the results. Um, and I think more importantly is as we work through the master plan process, so the next step that we're going to take. Will be to, we'll start with the goals and objectives statements from your existing plan, but we'll kind of. Build on those and add to them and modify them based largely in part on what, what we learned from the survey. So as you read through the results and, um, kind of think about what people had to say and how the data. You know, looks, think about how we can translate that into, you know, policies for the city, whether it's. You know, advocating for additional types of housing or. You know, adding additional land or having more language in there that supports or encourages certain types of business or industry, or if it's, um. Enforcement or infrastructure, all things that we're going to be needing to be thinking about, uh, as we work on the master plan. So. Um, I know there's a lot of information here. There's almost forty pages worth. So are there? Questions based on this? Just kind of want to take a month and. Think on it. Well, what we can do for the next meeting is maybe, um, we can kind of pull out the goals and objectives from your existing plan. Maybe start working on some suggestions for, for new ones as we kind of move into the real meat and potatoes of planning. For the long term.
Cause that's the first time I've seen it. So I wanted.
Yeah, we were kind of just getting all, all of these entered, um. And then getting something turned around and I want to make sure we had something for tonight. So that's why we're doing this on the fly. But yeah, we can, you can have this right away. So, um, you know, we'll be spending the next few meetings, probably talking about master plan stuff in some shape or form. And a draft, a draft ready probably in sometime in the winter or early spring is kind of what I'm thinking timeline wise.
All right. Any questions or concerns before we move on? Okay. Thank you. Uh, the next. Two items on the agenda deal with the short term rental. Uh, law and the zoning amendment. But so, um, I was told. That, uh, we, obviously you all know, we tabled this the last time around and that we were tabling it until we had the results. From the, uh, survey. And while we got a preliminary on this tonight, we didn't really have a chance to dive into what exactly the results were. So the suggestion was that we just move on and tackle that next month. Um, I just had the question of, since they're tabled, do we need to take any kind of action to continue to table them? Or will they just stay there until we come back to them? Okay. So, um.
To discuss them. It must come back. Until it's ready and leave that in.
Okay. So then I guess the next question would be, is, is next month appropriate for this or is there, is there a better time for us? From, from your perspective for us to go over this.
I think next month is probably fine. We, we haven't made any adjustments to the draft. Um, and you know, as I noted, we, it, it didn't look like based on when, when we went through the data that we got a lot of, a lot of guidance or strong feelings on this either way. So I was kind of hoping that we get like. Thirths or three quarters of people saying, yes, I, I, I support this or no, I don't. Um, and, and, and we didn't really, really get that. So it, it kind of almost suggests to me that. You know, I think what you've taken in the draft is a fairly conservative approach and that you're sort of. It is sort of collecting, collectively dipping its toe in the water. And I think we had what five or so licenses that could be authorized initially. Um, so it's something where it's like, yeah, we'll kind of see if this works and it's certainly. Amended, but there are some people that definitely support it, but it's not everybody. Um, so my initial thought was that the way that you had drafted this is probably pretty reasonable based on the survey results, but obviously, you know, we can. Um, continue to look at the data and see if we can identify any trends. Um, and I should also, also mention that if. Which we spent the short term rentals or anything else, if there's additional analysis that you want us to do on this or compare questions or. Do cross tabulation of data to. You know, dive a little bit deeper into a topic, let us know and, and we can do it and provide that for the next meeting too.
I do. I've got a lot of questions. I think one of them is zoning and. Um, as I see our zoning, um, we just. On the spur of the moment, um, limited it to B two and R two. But, and single family homes. So if you go to, you got your, your. We discussed not allowing more rental properties in the R one, cause it's a business and, um, we've already got. We already settled that. We have. Expand our rental businesses in the R one. But we also have the R three. The R four. The mixed use. I don't know if there's any houses in the mixed use. District. I didn't get a chance to look that up.
Trying to remember off the top of my head, we did some consolidation. And I can't remember if we actually have all of those anymore.
The R three and R four, I know that.
Thought we collapsed one of those at least into one of the other Rs, but I have to, I, I would have to go look at that.
That's why I think we need to look at that a little bit closer. Because there are, you know, some four apartment. Buildings that maybe one person out of the, maybe they have. Um, three regular renters and maybe they want to keep one open for, um, you know, the short term. But. I don't see why we couldn't expand it into those other residential. Area. Besides B two. And then we have the downtown business, which there's, I think. I counted once, there's like nineteen houses in the downtown business area. So that was one that we kind of approved. I think we really need to. Study and understand those districts before we. Say let's do it. Just my opinion.
Yeah, I agree. Looking at a zoning map, I was seeing the same thing. I don't know them off the top of my head. It'd be nice just to have one while we're having this discussion so we can see the streets and the locations.
And that this also brings up the other practical aspect of it. And obviously you know, from, from being on city council that. We heard back that there was not, um, let's say something short of universal happiness about us sending this. To up to city council. So my question is, is, is this coming back on city council's agenda the next time that they meet? Before we meet again, because if it is, and we're getting more direction from city council as to what they will eventually approve. That could definitely have a bearing on what we're doing here. So does it would know what the agenda looks like?
Excuse me, the next council agenda. Hack it goes out Thursday for October twelfth meeting, but. They've had a first read. I pulled it off the council agenda. Thinking it was gonna, needed to come back here first, then go back to city council, but. Maybe.
Not suggesting that it needs to be on council's agenda, but if it was going to be weighed in again, from their perspective, that information. It's futile for us to, to recommend something if it got strong opposition on the council. So I wanted to make sure if there was something still brewing there that we were aware of it. And that we were acting accordingly. But I do also recognize I can't, we can't, um. Wait for approval to recommend. Eventually we're going to recommend and they're, they're going to prove or they're not. But if it was, if there was something pending, I wanted to know about it.
I would feel more comfortable recommending anything until we've figured out what these residential districts. Are. I know some of them. I think where I live, it's like you could have apartments. I think that's our four, but we need to really know what we're doing on this deal.
So I'm looking for recommendations then. Should we bring this back up and have more discussion on this next month with. A, you know, and, and with what information do we want available when we discuss that? Or is this open ended and we get back to it when we get back to it?
I think it looks like the zoning part, well, I think. At the zoning itself. So we see those zoning districts that would help us make a good decision on where we should allow them. Right? I think there's some language in here. I made some notes on myself, just like, hey. Why is it listed this way? And can we change it? Now, because you talked about a number of permits being issued and I'm like, why don't we do a percentage based on the number of houses available? You know, for every thousand house, did you get a permit or whatever? Right? Um, so I, I'd love to look at the zoning and then also have some information about how many single family houses do we have? How many duplexes do we have? I don't know the answer to that. Right? Cause one, I want to make sure that we have proper housing for everybody that we want to be living and breathing. On a normal basis, but we know that we still have people that. Are going to Grand Rapids probably for bigger events and maybe want to stay outside of GR a little bit or come for Red Flano or whatever it might be. That we know we, we have Airbnbs that are already being rented. And so just making sure that we're smart about that. But I'd like to look at that zone and making sure that we see the number of housing units that we have available. I think that would help us make a good decision too.
Okay.
And, and I was aware about this, our, this draft only addresses single family u- units, but. I don't think that's fair to somebody who might have a duplex and wants to rent the other one on short term. If zone it, that's something we need to know.
Yeah, and I think also with that too, right? With the permit, if it is like a duplex or a quadplex or whatever it is. That the permit only applies to one of the dwellings, not all four, right? I think that's key. Just make sure we lay some things out of, because I was thinking about that one too, if we did make some changes. I mean, when I was in Airbnb in San Diego, it was like a quadplex and every single one was an Airbnb in the place I was at.
More discussion, in my opinion.
Month and we want. More information on zoning and the, you know.
Map of dwellings and the type of dwellings too, if we have those. And I, I think it'd also be helpful. I mean, as we know, that big apartment complex is going in. So if we know the. A rough estimate of future builds to maybe within the next twelve to twenty four months, that might be helpful. So we know what's actually on the docket that's being built. Around here to help with that growth that we know we're going to have. And then making sure we're being cognizant of that too.
And for, um, correct parliamentary procedure here. Can we, uh, table both of these individ- these individual items? Because it's actually two different items on the agenda. Can it be done in one motion or do we need to have two motions?
Make a motion to postpone, uh, other business B and C until next month. Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll support it.
The other comments or concerns before we. Move on to that, vote on that.
Mrs. Falg, you can make sure that we have that information maybe prior to the meeting, because I think that's a lot of data and I don't want to sit here looking at it during the meeting. I like the.
Absolutely.
Also that survey results will be helpful too. That would be interesting to read through there.
Okay, all in favor of tabling the rental issues until next month, please signify thy.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, we'll see those again next month. The last one under other business was D, the library parking area conceptual site plan.
So the CBDT is really spearheading this. They had a fundraising gala. Last weekend, um, they raised thirty thousand dollars in pledges. Um, so I just wanted to share with you, it's city property. Whatever that comes before you, but, um, the city already did. This, there's six angled parking spaces on Maple and we put in the sidewalk on Maple. Um, the rest, it, it's like a hundred thousand dollars is the estimate for the rest of this, the fountain in the middle. And some landscaping, six additional parking spaces along the northern part of this lot. Um, just bringing it to you for questions, comments. Is there something you dislike about this design that I can bring back to CBDT?
Fire thing is big. Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure. I thought that's where it was. I just want to be sure.
Uh huh.
I like the green space.
Like it too. Having those more parking spots is going to narrow up that road a little bit. Is there anything we can do to like, uh, put a truck route sign? Steer the trucks out to Cherry instead of up Main Street.
I, I, I guess the. The ultimate goal is to replace the bridge on Cherry Street. Then punch Cherry Street, Cherry Street through to White Creek. Semis would be thoroughly happy when that happens, but that's a whole lot of money.
Mm hmm.
Where Cherry, over Cherry Street is a lot.
Well, I'm not even talking going that far. I'm going from Cherry to Fifth. Instead of coming downtown with the semis.
Street was on the list for one or two years ago, but then when we did, redid Main Street. Knowing we were going to push all the traffic to Fifth. We're like, let's hold off on Fifth until we get Main Street done. And then it'll just be normal traffic on Fifth. Fifth Street is a main thoroughfare. It has to be built. For trucks rather than like Maple or, you know, your side streets. Um. Is on our list for this fiscal year. We haven't started it yet, but, um. That'll be, you know, final design through the winter with a spring paving.
When they, when they brought the site plan. Um, the, the. Was that the semis would go out. On Cherry Street instead of going downtown, which is kind of a. Kind of a, not going to be good when there's, the road's going to get narrower. Just always thought that that was what they were going to do is put that part of their truck route and had the trucks, the majority of the trucks. Out to Cherry.
From CS manufacturing?
The newer one there by the white pine trail. I'm talking about.
CS manufacturing to please post internally somewhere. They can't come down Maple. Um, and they do so, but.
There's no sign though to direct them. There's no sign though to direct them.
We, we've got, you know, contracts with fifty different companies. How can we individually let fifty different companies know? I'm like, well, they're hauling your product. Can't you require them to?
Yeah, but I could be wrong.
So, I mean, I, I'm not opposed to putting truck route signs.
Even one would help. But I don't know. It's just that that road's going to get narrower now. It's my only concern.
Get narrower or?
When they come out on Maple to. Now, if they come out on, on Cherry Street, you don't have as much pedestrian traffic and kids and all that kind of thing. And the dust it brings up is awful too.
Well, we're, we're not shrinking Maple Street. Maple Street needs to be repaved, resurfaced. Because half of the North Lane is not good pavement anymore. I mean, the plan for the Heart of Cedar Springs is more angled parking on Maple.
And that's going to narrow up that street.
But where we're putting the parking spaces is really in the right of way, not even in the street. So needs to be redone from Main Street all the way to the White Pine Trail.
Yeah, it does. That gravel spot is awful. But it's just, yeah, it's.
Maple Street when we do the Heart of Cedar Springs.
But that was their plan from the beginning to send that traffic, not down Maple, but over to Cherry. But there's no sign there that calls it a truck route. So that's the way it is.
Put a sign on Maple by the White Pine Trail, no semi-traffic or no truck traffic? And until we sign it, we can't enforce this is the truck route or not the truck route.
Even if it cut, cut it back by fifty percent or something, it'd be kind of nice. But I don't know. I just always wondered why that was always ignored. Bring the semis downtown instead of back and towards Expressway. I can see where some of them are going to still come downtown, but there, I can't see why all of them have to.
Genistry, but if we were able to dig into the site plan that we approved when that went up, I believe we had a discussion about the direction that their trick, their truck, their trucks were supposed to go. If we had that in their site plan and they're not doing it, that seems to me like that would be enforceable.
Yeah.
Maple where that White Pine Trail parking lot is and just make the road so it doesn't go through there anymore? Rather than, I mean, just ends at dirt basically past there, right?
Yeah, but we just put some Millings in the west side of the White Pine Trail for additional parking for like Red Flannel Festival.
Gotcha. Taking it out, it can be used for expanded parking when needed? I don't know. For roads. That's why I feel like I can't talk. I'm just.
Owns, where does the Maple Street end and their parking lot begin there? That's not clear to me.
Remember a very lengthy discussion, as I said out there about where those trucks were going to come out.
If a site plan was approved with that language in there, that seems to me like that's the first direction to go for enforcing.
Yeah, or at least just put a sign on truck route, go that way. Cause some of them can't, or they're going to go to Sand Lake, or they're going to go to Hill or something. It would cut down on it. Sometimes you sit there and you see ten semis coming around there and you know they're not going north. People who come here on a regular basis, they know which way to go and stuff, but.
What we're doing down there, we need to address how we're handling traffic around the Heart of Cedar Springs. You wouldn't expect semi-truck traffic going down Squire Street.
I know.
So it's, we have a similar type of area, albeit smaller, a similar area that we want to protect for certain types of uses.
So I mean, city council would be the one who I think would be able to designate truck routes and not to see, you want to work with, with the employer just to make sure that that's going to work for them and you're not making it impossible for them to do business, but.
It's all, it was all designed to go that way. It just has never had a sign to tell the trucks, you know, if you, if that, you can go that way, you don't have to go down to Main Street.
I think parcel mapper, that's designed to have Maple go all the way through at some point, right? So it looks like. Probably, it was probably plotted that way a hundred years ago. And the, the road was never constructed all the way through, if I had to guess.
Well, the cars, you know, that's not such a big deal, but I.
You're right. That's probably why I said I had to put a bridge in. Yeah, it's by a cost thing. That looks like that dirt turnaround area is probably. Yeah.
Beyond that, are we good with the, with what we're seeing here so far on that conceptual plan for the library?
Add to that Heart of Cedar Springs too. Make that really pop. I mean, that areas come along really good. And I think that's enhanced that a lot. Happy with it.
Do you think from us is just an informational item, right? So, okay, then we'll move on to item eleven, open discussion. Of course, item A is always correspondence. And we always have the calendar. It's probably a good time to remind everybody that you don't want to show up for next meeting while people are actively trying to vote in here. And so our next meeting will be the week after. It won't be the first Tuesday. And, and then upcoming projects, is there anything that that we need to hear about in the correspondence for upcoming projects?
Things, but no. So.
Then I guess we'll move on to staff comments. The first person's opportunity is the city managers.
So today, effective October first, we are now with PCI for our billing permit process instead of IMS. Had some emails back and forth today. So we understand all, my staff and I understand the process, what forms go to who and who provides what form to whatever. That down. I'm looking forward to getting a working relationship with PCI and how that goes. So. We had a company, early September, look at our property on West Street. We, so they looked at several sites that day. We are their top choice. They hope to have a decision soon, by the end of the calendar year for sure. So keep your fingers crossed. And then I did send out an RFP for the West Street property. Close to twenty developers. And then the right place has their own list of developers. Due to confidentiality, they couldn't share that with me. So they sent it out as well. But of the ones I emailed out, I had three companies reply and say, wow, this is really interesting. We will be probably submitting something and those RFPs are due November first. Proposals come in and we can get some of that property sold and developed. Wonderful. Yeah.
Wonderful.
Uh, city clerk comments? Comments from the planning commission members? Well, I don't have anything to say either, other than thank you for everyone's work and thoughtful attention to detail tonight. There's a lot of things came up with this rental thing that honestly, we're, we're nagging the back of my head. And I'm glad some of them voiced them, that maybe we need to just look at some details before we move forward. So thanks. Thank you for that. Um, report to the city council representative, I guess that would be.
Yeah, still me, my last month. And then we get a new counselor, but I'll be, I'll be keeping an eye on everybody. I'll tell you what. I just enjoy all you folks and counsel and and DDA and this, and I sat through many, many, many planning commission meetings before I even got on council and after I got on council, because I always thought they were so, such a part of what I had to do as a counselor. And it's helped for me to to know what's going on. I guess that's all I can say. And have a happy Red Flannel Day, you guys. It's supposed to be nice and warm. I'm expecting maybe twenty thousand people downtown in the city, maybe not just downtown all at once in our huge river of red that comes along downtown. So pretty exciting. I'll be in the office if anybody wants to come in and say hi and look at all of our, our gizmos and gadgets and T-shirts. So come on in. I'll be glad to sell it to you. Thank you.
And can I just clarify and when you leave city council, that, that doesn't mean you're leaving this body, are you?
No.
Okay. So I want to make sure, because if, if we, we should probably acknowledge that if that was the case, I wasn't aware of that. So, but good. Thank you. And reported planning consultant?
Nothing to report.
Well, in that case, I guess we are adjourned. It wasn't bad. Our.